Welcome to the 7:30 council meeting of December 13th. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Feraldi, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, we thank you for this time of year and the message that it sends to all who would hear it. And I pray that above all else, we honor you tonight, your son, and the gospel that he brought. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this city. Bless this meeting. Thank you for who you are. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I want to introduce Jenna Ung, who is with our Mayor's Youth Council. She's over there. She's a sophomore at New Covenant Schools. Would you like to say a few words or wave or whatever?[65.12][65.12](laughter) Thank you, Jenna, for coming this evening. First thing on our agenda is a Co-starter graduation. We are so pleased to recognize tonight's the Fall 2022 Cohort of Co-Starters graduates. Co-Starters is a 10-week program offered by the Office of Economic Development and Tourism in partnership with the Small Business Development Center Lynchburg region that equips aspiring entrepreneurs with the insights, relationships, and tools to turn a passion into a sustainable and thriving business. This nationally-based program is designed to jumpstart entrepreneurial ideas and provide a foundation for success, all within a community of other entrepreneurs working together. Since 2016, the program has supported more than 100 individuals, many of whom have launched new businesses in the Lynchburg community. A very special thanks to our Fall facilitators, Kristin Poston, Stephanie Keener, Jordan Reeves, Jawanza Hall, and those in the Lynchburg business community who have served as mentors, speakers, and service providers for this program. Each of you received your certificate upon completing the class in November, but as I call your name, please come to the front to be recognized and remain standing for a quick photo. Nicole Louvessour, may not be pronouncing that right. Tony Tru, Trista Rilly, Amy Robinson, Brittany Callahan, Emily Johnson, Latia Hancock, Clover Charles, LaDedra McQueen, Julie Palmer, Nichols Hawkins, Tara Johnson Smith. Congratulations to all of you. Okay. Now we have some special recognitions, bittersweet as it is, for our council members who are leaving council. And the first one is Dr. Ternay Tweedy. And I just have a few words for you. Ternay, you have been a strong leader who has always stood up for what is fair and right, even at times of the risk of unpopularity. Thank you. Your voice has been significant in the informing and defending the truth and will surely be a void in our deliberations. Thank you. Your "I see you" voice is a reminder to all of us that we need to be cognizant of our actions and to do what is right. Working alongside you for the past six years, I have felt the passion and the compassion of your beliefs as you fought to encourage our citizens to be informed and to scrutinize the data. The positive impact that you have had on our community is truly a legacy that will live on. You have been a colleague, a friend, and mentor, and I thank you. Thank you for your eight years of serving our community as councilmember, vice mayor, and mayor, and thank you for all that you have done to move our city forward and know that your voice will be missed. I wish you the very best as you continue your life's journey. Thank you. And now I'll ask you if you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you. I love that photo, too. Thank you. I just want to thank everyone in this council chamber, everyone who is a citizen of Lynchburg, a business owner, a nonprofit leader, all of our youth, our young adults, our older senior, more mature citizens. Thank you for supporting me. Thank you for allowing me to serve you. It has been eight years on council, but it has been a total of about 14 years of serving Lynchburg. And so I have given it my all. I have given it my passion, my enthusiasm, my excitement through change and challenge. I don't regret one vote. I don't regret one decision. And I think we have positioned Lynchburg to be the best 10 years and beyond. So thank you all. I appreciate you. I love everyone. I love working, especially with this amazing staff. The city staff, if I cry a tear, it's because I know the work that you all have put behind making this city what it is. Our school staff, always be encouraged, city and school staff, everyone. Don't allow anyone to define who you are or the great work you do. Challenge them back and understand that you are great. Lynchburg serves this region well, and without a great Lynchburg, this region is not good. So remember and focus, and don't allow anyone to take away the pride in which you serve. Thank you.
And now Vice Mayor Wright. Bo, it is clear that three generations of the Wright family have made an impact on our city. You have done a stellar job as vice mayor and councilman. Your love for Lynchburg is expressed in your commitment to our public education system, your passion about public safety, your encouragement of economic development, and your concern for all departments of the city as well as the employers' employes outside of this organization. Your advocacy for equity in jobs and compensation has helped move the needle in both of these areas. You have been an informed decision-maker who has held responsibility, equity, and integrity as essential qualities in the process of doing what is best for our citizens. You not only have left footprints over every block and neighborhood that you ran in our city, but you also have left footprints of classic statesmanship and decorum as a voice of reason on this council. Bo, thank you for your service. You will be missed.
Well, thank you all very much. I know that most of you are not here for these recognitions. You're probably here because you've got something to say on some pending business, so I'll just be very quick. Mostly, what I would like to offer tonight is thank you. And I think the first folks I want to thank are my council colleagues for your service to our community. Councilmember Feraldi, Councilmember Wilder, Councilmember Tweedy, Councilmember Helgason, and Mayor Dolan. I want to thank the new council members who will be joining this body for offering their leadership to our city. I want to thank the voters of Lynchburg who gave me, a native son, an opportunity to serve on their council. I want to thank my family, my parents, Jim and Marty, who taught me that we all have a respons-- I'm sorry. I did not expect to be emotional.[620.32][620.32](laughter) It's involuntary. Who taught me that we all have a responsibility to our community, my siblings, Brian, Adam, and Hope, who inspire me, and my partner, Emma, for her patience, guidance, and love, and in addition, her well-developed and excellently deployed sense of sarcasm.[639.36][639.36](laughter) And most of all, and I want to pick up on what Dr. Tweedy just said, I want to thank the people who show up to work for Lynchburg every day, who have taught me, a part-time councilmember, what committed principled public service looks like, and that's our city staff. Over the past four and a half years, I've had a courtside seat to your work. I've gotten to see how much effort you put in to provide the essential elements necessary for a healthy, safe, prosperous city. And I'll be the first to say that it can be easy to take for granted the clean water coming out of our taps, or the stable bridges that we drive across, or the fire department engine that shows up within minutes. And it can sometimes feel as though these things have always been there and always will be. Our parks, our museums, our libraries, our public safety network, our child protective services, and police, and public works. But here's what I've learned. All that is a result of honest-to-God, hard work, day in, day out. So in other words, we all have a city team that we can and should be incredibly proud of. So to my city colleagues, I want to thank you for your service to Lynchburg. It's been a privilege working with you. Thank you very much. And that's me running the city. Isn't that fun?[728.48][728.48](laughter) Thank you.
This evening, we are also celebrating the service that Councilmember Randy Nelson has given to our city. He was not able to attend tonight, but we want him to know that we value his dedicated service and his invaluable contributions to our city. We do have a key to the city for him, and I will personally deliver it to him and express our gratitude for his service. Thank you. Okay, now we have to get down to business. The fun is over. Tonight's city council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is the consent agenda. This section includes routine items, and all items may be approved by one vote. The GSA, TSA lease ratification. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Cast your vote. Consent agenda passes. Six-zero. Thank you. We are now into public hearings. This section includes all public hearings as required by law or as council may direct. Procedure is staff will make a presentation. Comments will then be solicited from the public, and individual speakers shall have three minutes to speak. If the speaker represents a group, the speaker shall have five minutes. A speaker representing a group shall identify that group at the beginning of his or her remarks, and a group may only have one spokesperson. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and locality of residence. Upon the conclusion of public comments, the public hearing will be closed, and the matter will be referred to council for deliberation. First item, consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the rezoning of Grace Orthodox Church at 3300 Carroll Avenue. And Ms. Rachel Frechelzen was going to give a brief summary.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The purpose of this petition, as you stated, is to rezone this property from I-2 Light Industrial District to B-5 General Business District to allow the expansion of the existing church to include the construction of a cover deck at 3300 Carroll Avenue. This church has been in operation on the site since at least 1955 and is considered a legal non-conforming use in the I-2 Light Industrial District. The future land use map recommends institutional use for the area. The city's institutions include religious, educational, and other nonprofit entities within the city. Rezoning to B-5 would bring the use into conformity with the zoning ordinance and also allow the expansion of the church. Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning at their meeting on October 26, 2022.
Would the petitioner like to make a presentation? Ten-minute limit on this one.
Yes, my name is Scott Schallenberger. I'm a ruling elder and a trustee of Grace Orthodox Presbyterian Church. We plan not to change the use for the church building. It's going to continue to be a church building. Our interest was, we wanted to build a cover-decked off the back of our fellowship hall so that our moms have an opportunity to watch their kids on the playground and the playset that we're putting in our backyard. So that was the purpose of the zoning change, and that's pretty much all that I have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Madam Clerk, are there any emails or phone calls from citizens?
There are.
Thank you. No rebuttal needed. Public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Dr. Tweedy, would you like to make any further comments?
No. I'm grateful that you all will be adding the addition to serve your parishioner, so thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Wright, are there any other questions or comments? Please cast your vote. Next item, consideration of adopting a resolution, random and conditional use permit, CUP, to TPB Enterprises LLC to allow the construction of 306 apartments at 1001, 1009 Dillard Drive and 2009 Enterprise Drive. Rachel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I know this is very fresh in your minds as we just recovered it at the work session, but for the benefit of the public, I'll give a very brief overview. TPB Enterprises is petitioning for the CUP to allow the construction of 306 apartments in the B-3C Community Business District Conditional. CUP was previously approved here on August 13, 2019, to allow the construction of 116 apartments on the property. That CUP has now expired, and as part of the same petition, the property was also rezoned at the time from I-2 Light Industrial and I-2C Industrial Conditional to B-3C Community Business District Conditional. The proffers included at the time are still in effect today, including the traffic improvements that were proposed. The future land use map recommends a mixed-use designation for this property, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing regarding this item at their meeting on November 9 and recommended approval of the petition.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation? You have a 10-minute limit.
Sure. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Daniel Cyrus. I reside at 200 West Edgeway, Lynchburg, Virginia. I am here tonight representing TPB Enterprises along with Norm Walton from Perkins and Orson and Bill Winch with EPR. I just first want to start out by giving you all a little bit of background associated with the project. This project is located at the intersection of Enterprise and Dillard Drive, right at the Bedford County and Lynchburg City border. As Ms. Frechelzen pointed out, about three years ago, this matter came before you all as a rezoning from industrial use to B-3. In addition to that, there was a request for a conditional use permit, which was approved in order to allow the construction of apartments in a B-3 district. This matter came before you all before COVID occurred, and the original proposal was for a large-scale gym and event center. So we've since, since that has happened, obviously, the CUP has a two-year expiration window. We've become involved in the project, and with COVID, and obviously, the global pandemic has changed numerous different businesses, certainly gyms and businesses of a nature to where there are numerous people are a big part of that that's changed, right? So the B-3 portion of this project is still here. It's still part of the project that we're presenting to you tonight. So although our request is for a conditional use permit, I want everybody to understand that the mixed-use part of this project still exists. It's simply not part of the request because it can be done by Wright. So what that means is, is that the gym is still part of the project. It is smaller, albeit it's still a 25,000-square-foot gym, which is a large gym. There are still two commercial out parcels that are located along Enterprise. So those are the B-3 by Wright uses that are a part of this. The conditional use permits associated with the construction of 306 high-end apartments, those would be four-story buildings, interior corridors, elevators. I think that you're all familiar with some of the projects that we've done within the city. You know, we have a, we have what we believe is a reputation for quality projects, and, you know, being based here in Lynchburg, it's important to us to maintain that. So that being said, just a few other points that I want to hit on before I turn it over here. We did hold a neighborhood information meeting. We sent out letters to all of the adjoiningers. We did not have anyone that came to that meeting. After the, that was done before Planning Commission, after we held the neighborhood information meeting, the day before Planning Commission, actually, we learned that there were two local businesses that did have some concerns with the project. And those businesses are Hanwha Asdell and J. Crew, and I believe you will hear from them later tonight. At Planning Commission, a representative from J. Crew did speak, and we have worked through city staff and directly to try to communicate with them about this project and to try to come to an understanding of what their concerns are. I believe you all may have received a letter from them with some of their concerns. Unfortunately, we never received any real substantive response, other than them to tell us that they felt like they had nothing to talk to us about. So it's been difficult for us to determine what their concerns are. Obviously, it's hard to do that when someone won't speak to you. So that being said, we're going to present some information here tonight that is associated with that, particularly associated with traffic, since we understand that to be one of their main concerns. And before we do that, I'm going to turn it over to Norm Walton with Perkins and Orson. He's going to talk a little bit about some of what can be done with the property currently and what those uses could be and how that could potentially affect traffic. And again, those will be by Wright uses that he's going to talk about for a little bit.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name is Norm Walton. I'm with Perkins and Orson. And I did want to touch briefly on what can and can't be done on this property. This project was heard at TRC on October the 18th with no objections. Everything that was made in comments have either been addressed here in this concept plan or can be addressed on the site plan, and it was also heard on November 9. The Planning Commission recommended it was provided to you for approval. So the project right, the property right now is zone B-3 conditional. Some of the proffers to eliminate some of the uses were auto repair, furniture store, flea market, convenience store, liquor store, pawn shop, short-term loans, auto retail establishments, and pet or supply companies. They were proffered out. With the B-3C zoning that's currently in place, some of the uses that can be placed on this property is mixed-use residential structures, hotel motels, healthcare facilities, professional offices, employment agencies, grocery stores, or supermarkets, arcade, construction-related businesses, greenhouses, and restaurants, all of which, you know, as a combination of, will be much higher traffic generation than what we have shown on this plan. Actually, this plan has less of a traffic generation than the plan that was approved by you in 2019. We believe that this project blends in with the corridor. If you look at Enterprise Drive, there's a mixture of industrial, commercial, as well as residential uses throughout from Laxton Road all the way through the city limits, which this project has commercial and residential uses, and we feel that it fits right in. Now, Mr. Winch, Bill Winch would like to discuss traffic issues with you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Winch. I'm a professional engineer specializing in traffic engineering. I've been doing these types of studies for over 30 years, and we were engaged by the group here to look at traffic, the traffic situation. We know that was a big concern. We, in conducting these traffic counts, we collected fresh traffic counts, excuse me, traffic study, we collected fresh traffic counts last week representing levels of traffic that include the holiday staffing for the adjacent businesses there. So full-on traffic volumes. We were looking at the morning, AM, midday, which encompassed 3:00 PM with the shift change at J. Crew, and also the PM, peak hours of the day. In particular, we're looking at the queuing situation and the change of traffic conditions that would be anticipated with and without the development. And the queuing is really critical here. What we found is that with today's conditions, the average queue, and focusing on the 3:00 PM period, because really the AM and the PM have very little traffic, there's really no problems at the intersection at all. But the 3:00 PM, we see the, really a flush of traffic come out of J. Crew. There's a few minutes there where the queues are pretty long, and then they, then they kind of temper down, if you will. But the average queue during the peak 15 minutes, so right from 3:00 to 3:15, today exceed 400 feet. But with the development and with the additional lanes that would be constructed with this traffic, that queue, that average queue decreases down to about 200 feet. So, and what's happening here is there's a very high right-turn volume, about 348 cars in an hour, versus the left-turn volume, which is about 230 cars. So at present, the left turners are blocking the right turners because you don't have enough lane there to get the left turners out of the way. So with the improvements proposed with this project, that really mitigates today's problem. And as well, it's important to know that the site generates very little traffic in that 3 o'clock time period. You know, residential is primarily AM and PM, and the gym use and other uses are very low during that hour. So the good complementing uses relative to this 3:00 PM time period that's of such concern. So that's the quick briefing. Closing?
So to summarize a couple of things here. First, on the traffic, essentially, what we've determined is, is that the main issue here is the shift change, which happens at 3:00 PM. And so the current traffic counts that we've taken, as Bill explained, are from yesterday, which is from our understanding, J. Crew's holiday staffing, which is their peak time. So what we're proposing to do helps address an existing condition that exists today and will continue to exist whether or not this project proceeds. So at the end of the day, we actually feel like we are trying to address an existing problem in order to make our neighbors' issues better than they are today. One other thing I want to hit on quickly is, this project, we believe, is a Wright-location project, right? We're not before you all today asking to rezone R1 to R4 with single-family adjoiningers, changing the fabric of a neighborhood. We're here asking for a, and I'll just briefly say, we're asking for something that is, yes, adjoining industrial uses. It's already been rezoned to B-3. It is no longer industrial. We appreciate your time, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the council. Appreciate you offering the time to J. Crew to speak about our point of view on this issue.
Your name?
My name is Scott Monker.
Thank you.
I'm the senior vice president of supply chain for J. Crew. I've worked for the company for eight years. By the way, I hope everybody's wearing J. Crew jackets and ties, please shop at our stores. So I'm here to talk about the CUP apartment complex, 306 apartments that are planned at the corner of Dillard and Enterprise. There's been quite a lot of commentary around traffic, and the issues are traffic. And quite honestly, the issues are people, and the issues are people. It's the people that we employ and their ability to get in and out of our workforce safely, and that corner, as it continues to block up, is a problem. It's a problem before-- It's a problem before this building, we're looking at this apartment building, and hopefully, when we get through this process, that we're going to find a solution for that corner. The other is, it's a problem for the 306 people who are going to live in those apartments, where two of those buildings actually are adjacent to Dillard Drive, meaning they are on the street. And yes, we operate two shifts. We have shifts that change at 3:00 to 3:30. We've done a lot to improve that traffic. That traffic used to be pure 100% shift change. What we do now is we mediate the shift change by four separate shift changes, meaning the first shift will have four different start times. We used to do it where everybody left the building, 500 people left the building, and 500 people came into the building. Now, every 15 to 30 minutes, we actually meter the associates into the building, which has significantly improved the corner of Dillard and Enterprise. It has not solved the problem. There's just a lot of people that are going up and down that street. So in terms of the other people, right, we talked about the people in the apartments, we have tractor trailers, almost 20,000 of them, that either go in or out of Dillard. I'm not sure in terms of the traffic surveys, and I'm not an engineer, but big tractor-trailers sitting out of streetlight, when your windows right there, they have to put their brakes on, they have to put it back in gear, and they have to move those trucks. We do not stop moving trucks in that facility 24/7. They come in and out down Dillard Drive. So there's a concern from J. Crew's perspective for the people that are actually going to live in those apartments, and there's absolutely concern for our associates getting in and out, and by the way, time for them. They like their time off, they like to get paid well, and they don't like sitting in traffic. And the least we can do is keep them from having to sit in the traffic when they want to leave the building. Is my time up?
Yeah, your time is up. Thank you.
Am I speaking? I didn't get five minutes.
Is there anyone else?
You're going to go?
Yes.
I thought I got five instead of three. I only got three?
What?
You came as an individual.
Did you come as an individual or for J. Crew?
I came for J. Crew. I'm sorry.
So I took it as an individual, that's my fault. Do you want to put two minutes back on the clock?
Yeah, put two minutes back on the clock, please.
Fantastic.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Thank you. So just for some of you who don't know, J. Crew, we've been here for almost 40 years. We are not on Dillard, we're actually on Ivy. And Ivy is essentially a street that we've given the rights to the town to bring the bus that comes down to the end of the street and comes back up. By the way, that bus makes 23 trips up and down Dillard Drive. Forty, almost 40 years here, we've employed a tremendous amount of people in this building for over 35 years. This is an incredibly important operation for J. Crew. It is our online business. J. Crew has 500 stores throughout the US, and we actually serve 50 countries worldwide. This DC is our direct fulfillment center, and anybody who purchases online knows what that is. We deliver all throughout the United States, every zip in the United States, including Hawaii and Alaska. It's in excess of a $1.7 billion business for J. Crew, and it's incredibly important piece of real estate for us. And we are here because of the associate population. They have been fantastic for us. We have many tenured employees that work at our company. We just recently experienced 35 years for almost 12 of our associates, and I'd say 60% of our associates are with us five years more. So they like working with us, we love them, and they're part of J. Crew family. And actually, Mayor Dolan, you had the opportunity to walk through the building, Councilman Faraldi, and thank you, Councilman Wilder, for coming through our operation. But I think visuals are worth 1,000 words. What we do there is not easy, it's quite complex. We worked through the COVID, we never shut that facility down, we had a safe operation, we provided all the appropriate protocols in that building, and we hired people during COVID. It was 75% to 80% of our sales. And that workforce came, and not one issue, the contact tracing. Thank you very much for taking the time.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Opposition.
Ox, uh-huh. Well, he's big in.
Opposition.
No, I'm asking if there's anyone who would like to speak. Oh, in opposition, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, wake up.
Speaking on behalf of Hanwha Asdell, my name is George Bondurant. My address is 90 Horseman Drive, Lynchburg, Virginia, 24502. There was mention of a notification, we never received any notification. I don't know, you know, maybe it got lost in the mail. J. Crew didn't receive a notification either. So I really didn't even know that the property had been rezoned in 2019, honestly. I got no notification then either. I'm part of the Planning Commission for Campbell County, so I know how the notifications work and the neighbors come in. You know, I don't know what happened, but those things do happen, so it is what it is now. We've been in our location since 1989. We intentionally purchased that property in an industrial park. In addition, we've increased jobs from 25 in 1989 to 240 employees today. We inherently infused approximately $20 million yearly into the Lynchburg community via employee wages, utilities, and taxes. In addition to that, the warehouse and transportation that we pay goes right back into the Lynchburg community. We've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for 32 years, I've been an employee at Asdell for 32 years. My traffic study is based on 32 years of watching that road go in and out, not a formula on the back of an envelope, right? I did talk to the developers on the phone, I gave them my input, my input's the same as I gave them here. And I have letters, this letter that I'm reading from, I have copies if anybody needs one. This project has increased the living units by 160% since the last traffic study. To me, that's significant, that's not insignificant, as was mentioned earlier. Local traffic's a concern for us. We have approximately 35 to 40 trailers, tractor-trailers, turning left and right out of that facility every day. We are a 24-hour facility seven days a week, not to mention, we have 175 employees in and out of that facility every day. We're trying to protect those employees, and we're trying to protect our business. At current full capacity in 2024, which is projected, the truck number will increase to 45 to 50 trucks per day, with an associated increase in the number of employees. We intend to add 20% more capacity in 2025. That would further increase our truck traffic to 55 to 60 trucks a day, and 15 to 20% more employees for those shifts. We're a partner with Lynchburg, we have been a partner with Lynchburg, we bought a property in an industrial park, we didn't expect to have to fight off apartment complexes in the industrial park. We try our best to be good neighbors, but in the end, we are an industrial manufacturing facility. Residential neighbors at that proximity, you know, present a whole new challenge, even if we're legally compliant. We could still have unhappy neighbors being legally compliant. We experienced this with the Windhurst development, which is much further away, and we dealt with noise complaints, smell complaints, traffic complaints. The trash trucks that left our facility might drop some trash on the road, we had complaints for that. So we have dealt with all of those things, with the Windhurst development, and that seems to have settled down, and now we're going to have something right across the street if this is passed. So I recommend that you turn down this development. I would, I would ask you one rhetorical question. If I bought 15 acres in Irvington Park, would you give me a rezoning to put a manufacturing facility there? Would you do that? So when you think about that, hopefully that'll help you answer this question. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Yes, please come forward.
My name is Colby York, and I'm Vice President of Thrive Logistics. And we're just right across the intersection there at 2001 Enterprise Drive. And we're concerned about this development as well. We acquired this property with the distinct purpose of operating in an industrial setting, which is essentially located to local businesses, providing opportunity for convenient expedited services. This rezoning would jeopardize our ability to adequately service our customers on a daily basis. We have a warehousing facility there, we have employees there to come to work every day. We also offer distribution services for J. Crew. We have a lot of trailers that they park on our property as well. So we want to urge you to disapprove this rezoning from recent meetings and discussions with my neighbors. I know there may be some who have not managed to attend this meeting or to send letters or emails, share my opinions as well. So we ask that you would consider that and disapprove it. If anyone would need a letter, I do have copies for everyone, if anybody would like one, I'd have those here. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Ask me in favor.
Madam Clerk, are there any emails or phone calls?
There are none.
Thank you. There's an opportunity for a rebuttal from the developer if you'd like to.
Thank you for the opportunity to respond here. I want to talk a little bit about some of the points that have been raised by the, by the neighbors here. So something that has continually been brought up here is people, right? And that is at the very nature of what this project is for us as people. So we're looking to create a community within the existing Windhurst community. We're looking to create a community where people have access to fitness, a community where people have access to living, a community where people have access to the city services that we all hold near and dear to our hearts. It's interesting to me, I think every one of the businesses that has spoke tonight has spoke about how important their employees are to them, and that's great to hear. Because honestly, I think anyone that's in business would agree that without the folks that are there every day performing whatever they do, they wouldn't be a business, right? So it's interesting, because in a lot of localities that we work in, we talk to manufacturers particularly all the time that are desperate for quality housing, so that their employees can have a quality place to live, to where they can be close enough to work for it not to be a burden to travel to work. Lynchburg has a housing crisis, their nation has a housing crisis. These are simply facts that I think that we're all aware of. Again, I understand some of the comments about this was an industrial park in the 80s, but here we are today. This is a conditional use permit, this is not a rezoning, it's already been rezoned from an industrial use. It could no longer be an industrial use without another rezoning. So again, I think those are all important factors to consider when you make your decision. Some of the other comments that were brought up that I think were particularly interesting, the bus line was brought up. Again, that goes back to my earlier point about this being a right location for this project. This is not a typical project that's brought before you all, that's not on the bus line, that doesn't have a lot of those city services. This project is located, again, at the gateway into the city. It's located in the gateway into the Windhurst corridor, which I think we can all agree is certainly a strong residential area of the city. I do, you know, I do just want to kind of address some of the other comments, some of the concerns related to noise and to traffic and all of those types of things. Those have been brought up, I think we've talked about them at Lydum. You know, we're doing everything that we can to make the existing conditions, everything that you've heard tonight are existing conditions. They're not going to change whether or not this project goes forward for the better or for the worse. They're going to continue at the rate that they are today. We're doing everything that we can to address them and to make them better. I mean, we, the gentleman from Hanwha Asdell, he was gracious enough to speak with me on the phone about the project, and we discussed it. We talked about his concerns with the noise. They do have a large residential community that joins them directly behind them that's located in Bedford County. There are some trees that are there as a buffer, but they do have a large residential community that's behind there. Again, all of that being said, he was really the only one that would speak to us about this. We've reached out numerous times, we've had, tried to have these conversations, we've tried to be good neighbors and do everything that we can, and the solution that we came up with is what we feel like mitigates what we understand the concerns to be the best. So with that, I appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, we're all here and happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The public hearing is now closed, and the matter rests with council. Councilmember Faraldi.
Move to deny.
Pardon?
Move to deny.
Second.
Would you like to make some comments?
I would. Out of curiosity, with it being by, this location being by right right now, could staff articulate how many, don't, don't get up, it's okay, thank you, how many apartments could be built on this as it stands right now?
So I think, I think you heard Norm say that mixed-use residential is allowed by right. It's hard to put a number on it, it's a ratio that is set in our zoning ordinance. So 50% of the floor area needs to be residential in order to pursue the by-right mixed-use.
So for someone who does open this, that would be like 1,000 square foot have to be residential, 1,000 square foot have to be.
Yeah, one for one, essentially.
For a total of 2,000 square feet.
Right, so it would depend on how much commercial you're able to get there, I guess in terms of floor plate for the residential to, to be added on to.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. I would like to renew my desire for us to review by-right policies. I know that was a conversation I brought up, I don't know if that was before Mr. Bendig got here or not, but that was something we've, in passing, said, hey, I'd like to talk about this, but we haven't really gotten to it. Because that is of concern to me when it's coupled with something I have consistently said, which is where we're using business zone to some degree for residential use. I've, I've said this a lot, especially this year, and I, it just doesn't sit right. I think we need to be reevaluating those to some degree, so I'd like to renew that request. I find it interesting, speaking more to the project itself, I find it interesting that the developer claims to have done a lot of work in communication with manufacturers in other localities, but seemingly not this one. And that's a concern. You know, I would appreciate the lack of communication from someone if, if there was an attempt from the start to communicate with them. But if business is business, why should I be reaching out to you if you didn't have the consideration to reach out to me in the first place? That was a concern that I raised in private meetings with the developer in trying to understand what this project was all about. I have severe reservations now, because the fact is, I'm looking at the jobs associated with J. Crew, the jobs associated with Haswell, and forgive me, sir, the other entity that Economic growth, in my mind, starts with what you got. And if we can't retain the best of what we have, then our future, in my mind, is not that great when it comes to developing the economy. And so I want to do everything I can to protect that, in addition to the concerns I have with, do have with traffic. Adding another lane, albeit would be potentially helpful, I would hate to see those tractor-trailers stack up on end at 3 o'clock. And so there are a plethora of reasons to, to be opposed to this. I believe I've articulated plenty of them, and I'll be voting in opposition to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Helgason, followed by Vice Mayor Wright.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as I heard the presentations and lots of good opinions on both sides, I was here in 2019 when this was approved, and I'm, I'm sure I voted in favor of the proposal, because the proposal had a pretty good benefit to the community. It had only 100 apartments, it had a lot of commercial, it was originally industrial, so you couldn't do anything by right, couldn't build houses or apartments on any of this as an industrial, an I-2 zoning. or apartments on any of this as an industrial, an I-2 zoning. And so we said, okay, maybe this would be a good project, because that sounded good. And so there were some pretty good things with it, having a lot of commercial that was in there, having very few apartments. Today is a whole different day. I mean, it's now three times the apartments and one-fifth the commercial. I recognize the, the benefits of the turning lane, but I believe Ms. Freschaisen, that turning lane is proffered with the rezoning. So when this is built, the, the turning lane has to be built regardless of we approving this CUP, or they can keep it by right, they still have to put in that turning lane. So that's not a, you know, kind of a negotiating chip. So what it was before, and we, quite frankly, I think we approved it because it was a good project, and we believed it. It's a different day today. It's, it's a whole different project, and so I won't be in support of this project.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I just had a, a few questions, and the first is just to clear up a couple items on the notification question. Can you remind us what the requirement is for notification of adjoining properties? And, and then a simple head nod will be sufficient as to whether we, you know, you all met those obligations.
So all of the notification requirements include the posted sign at the frontage, the notification in the newspaper, which we have to do, even though not a lot of people see that, as well as notifying adjoining property owners. I know the gentleman from, I believe it was Asdel, said that they did not receive a letter. They are in our mailing list. I know at a big organization, sometimes mail can not make it to the right desk, so I do apologize if it didn't make it, but we did send that letter out. And, you know, I know J.Crew has referenced not getting a letter. J.Crew doesn't fall within the, the boundary of, we use a 215-foot buffer to join properties. They, they're farther away than that, so they would not have received a letter.
So is that, that 215-foot buffer fairly common in localities? There's nothing unusual about our ordinance in that respect?
I mean, I haven't compared.
Yeah.
But, you know, and I'm not sure how the gentleman, the, the other county does it. He said he's planning commissioner there.
And the city sends out those letters, correct?
The city does send out the letters, and that's by code that we, that we have to notify people adjoining.
Okay. So I guess perhaps a takeaway, just as maybe we need to figure out new ways to, to let folks know, because obviously a lot of folks aren't, sadly, aren't reading the paper, you know, not as folks are taking the paper as they, as they used to. So I do want to assume that everybody here is operating in, in good faith. I also want to trust the professionalism of the, of the traffic engineer and the engineering studies that were performed, but I do want to have a couple questions, and I don't know exactly who to direct them to, but I do want to confirm, does the study take or does it not take into account what the forecasted use of the road is? So, you know, please come up, and I'll just say while you're coming up, that, you know, we've heard that from some businesses that they anticipate usage on that road to increase over time, and in fact, in the not-too-distant future. Does your, does your study take that into account?
We did not agree with the traffic in the future. We just took the existing traffic and the projected traffic for the sites.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And, thank you, thank you very much. So the petitioners made the claim that the traffic improvements within the plan will not just allow for the increase in traffic should the development proceed, but will sort of resolve existing challenges with that intersection, which we've heard a lot about this evening. Does city staff agree that those, that the improvements proposed would actually improve that intersection over the baseline?
Yes.
Okay. And is the city planning to make any improvements to that intersection absent this petition?
No.
Okay, so the, just for anybody who's at home, the answer is no. So the, the petitioner here, one could say the petitioner is suggesting, hey, we're willing to pay for this and do this work for you, more or less, and it's going to resolve a problem that's affecting all these businesses anyway. So I just wanted to ask those questions, thank you.
Just one thing, if I may.
Yes, Councilmember Hoggson.
Just, but Ms. Freschaisen, I think you've said it earlier, but if we allow for a CUP or not, the turning movements on Dillard Drive to Enterprise Drive are proffered, that when somebody develops this property, they're going to have to improve those turning movements. That's proffered in there, goes with the project. That was part of the, the bargaining chip with the, when it went from I-2 to the B-3. It doesn't matter, yes. So that's got to be in there, whether we approve this or not approve it.
Back to our?
I was somewhat a little torn. I do like the, the original project, because it was like the athletic center and another, another thing that was really encouraging for the citizens of our community, so I was in favor of that. I think it was like 116 units originally, and then it did switch to 300 units, so I was, I was a little concerned. After talking with the developers, I felt better. And then I toured J.Crew, and then I had a little challenge there, because I've, I've taken people to J.Crew for work, and I have seen the, the challenge of getting people to J.Crew, because trying to get there on time is sometimes a little challenging, because there's a, there's a backup at that, on Dillard Road, so I do understand that. I appreciate our businesses, because we do want to make sure we're supporting our businesses for our community, because again, originally, I guess that was an industrial park originally. So I'm somewhat torn on the area. I'm still wanting to hear the rest of our council members. I'm kind of leaning towards Councilmember Chris Farrell's motion, but I still want to hear maybe from the other council members, see what other thoughts they may have as well. And then this, and I don't know if this might be the right spot for the project, but let's continue to hear from other council members.
I was here also in 2019, thank you, Councilwoman Wilder. I'm sorry, I just took the liberty and started talking. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. No, I, I'm not wrong with that.
Thank you. And so I, I do remember having approved this project at that time because of the 106 or 116 apartments with the commercial use. My concern now is that how much it has grown in size. And so, you know, I don't think, unless I missed it, why did it triple? Why did, why did that number triple? And you can come up, and I think for, for the public and as we're discussing this, I haven't heard that. So I, I have an assumption, but I don't want to assume.
So, yes, ma'am, so I thank you for asking the question. Obviously, the, when you guys originally approved this project, as you've all pointed out, the gym portion of the project was significantly larger, right? And so for this project to work out from a pro forma perspective, it's necessary to have a certain density to do this project. So, you know, Councilmember Hoggson, you were absolutely correct, it is proffered in the original rezoning that, that, that turn lane gets added, but quite frankly, the project doesn't work from a financial perspective without this. So I can't predict the future any better than anyone else can, but I think that's something that's important to consider. And I would like to say, these are all emails, these are probably 25 emails that were sent to various members of J.Crew with correspondence, not necessarily completely unanswered, but, you know, the comment was made that there was concern with us not trying to meet with manufacturers. We have absolutely tried to meet with everyone that we can, and, you know, if we can't get a response from anybody, then it's very difficult to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I was here in 2019 too, and I also supported the project, because I thought it was going to be the sweet little neighborhood with the gym and everything and 106 apartments. To me, and, and I also, at that time, did not go down to J.Crew to look what that was going down at that end of the street. I did this time, and I'm very happy that I did. I have a great feeling for what goes on and the challenges that they not only face now, but how they would be increased in the future. So I am, I think this is definitely a industrial park situation, and I would, I do not support 300 and some apartments going on that road. And if I could just add, because I did not tour, but I worked at J.Crew at one point, so I, I'm, thank you. So like many people in this town probably, but at a certain point years ago, so I am familiar with the operations, the warehouse, the call center and, and other areas, but I just, I just feel like the increase to the number of apartments and the projected increase of the tractor-trailers for businesses is a concern, because I, like other people, travel this part at different times, you're, you're on the light where the old Walgreens was, and you're making that left, and it's a very hectic area, and, and even with the traffic, but I just wanted to add that in there, I forgot, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you for that. Dr. Wilder?
Again, I do want to, I do like supporting developers, because I think that's also what makes our economy work, is developers, the businesses, I think all of that works well. And I appreciate developers working on a couple of other projects in our community for, for low-income residents, so I appreciate the work that the developer and his members are doing on that project as well. And one other concern I had was when they mentioned about the, the hours of the trucks go back and forth continuously. We're dealing with a situation now on Bedford Avenue, about one of our corporations and the residents are complaining about the noise level. And that does concern me that if trucks are going continuously, that might be a little, even though the residents might move there in that apartment complex, they might later on say this is a bit much, and it may cause, as, as J.Crew was mentioning, they may have a little problem there with their workers, with their staff. So I, I do understand the, the argument as well. Thank you.
Okay. So are we ready to call for the vote?
Can I call for the vote?
The motion is to deny.
The motion is to deny. It's to deny.
I'm sorry, forgive me, I meant the other way.
I know you did.
Apologies.
Okay, so, development is denied, 6-0 with one almost.
No, no, it should be the other way. It should be the other way. Do you want to redo it for the camera just for? Yeah, I'd be happy to do it again. Okay. People watching at home just to see? Yes, I'm sorry, I did.
Okay, so cast your vote. Okay.
Thank you.
6-0, thank you. Don't feel bad, Vice Mayor, I did that one time too. Okay, thank you. Next item, excuse me, consideration of adopting a resolution and an ordinance amending the future land use map and approving the rezoning of 1114, 1126, and 1168 Old Gravesmill Road. This is a continuation of a public hearing from our November 1st meeting. Ms. Freschaisen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. ZZ and ZZ LLC is petitioning to rezone these properties from R2 Low-Medium Density Residential District to R4C High Density Residential District Conditional. The petition also proposes to amend the future land use map from Medium Density Residential to High Density Residential. The rezoning would allow the construction of 169 apartments, 29 condominiums, and associated amenities. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item at their, at their meeting on October 12th, 2022, with the addition of the proffers in your packet.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to make a presentation?
Good evening, happy holidays, everyone. This is the last time I'll present for Council, Councilman Wright and Councilman Tweedy, it's been an honor. Madam Mayor, I would like to piggyback on the presentation, as you know, we were, heard at the last meeting. I apologize for my voice, I've been under the weather as well. So this was a continuation, I think everyone is familiar with the project. I do just want to reiterate the highlights for those that might be watching online. As the developer has proffered, has attempted to proffer, but then was, you know, and we had some discussion about that. The biggest point of this is that there's a development directly across the street very similar. This is not the highest density that we could use for this project. We, we chose to lower the density, but the biggest piece is the opportunity for the path to homeownership through proven rental history in the townhomes that are a part of this development. There is quite a few amenities that are offered within it, as well as walking trails, you know, credence given to keeping as much of the existing trees and topography that we can within a development. And so with that, I would like to give the rest of the time to the developer and as well as our traffic engineer, who could not be with us last time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say real quickly, I'm Jason Brown, been here before, thanks again for all your time, thanks to you, those that are departing and your time that you've done for, you know, our, our city. Just real quickly, I want to reiterate, you know, this is different. We're offering a homeownership opportunity for people that move into the apartment complex. It, it does allow young folks, older folks, whomever it is, an opportunity to come in and invest in themselves, for people that don't have the ability to go get financing in a traditional way. We would never own any of that money, it would be theirs. If they never got to the point where they were able to do that and they left and had to move somewhere else, they still had, still their money, they get to have it. Not only does it help save money, it helps them potentially get into that homeownership. I think it's unique, different, I don't think, I've not been aware of any other real great things that have been brought to the view of the council or otherwise, to try to start to address the issue that we do have. The last group mentioned it. We got a housing crisis all over this country, we got one right here in Lynchburg, and so I'm only speaking to that degree because it's what I'm excited about, honestly. Of the whole project, it's what I'm excited about, and if you can't tell it, I'm, I'm sorry, but it is. I really think it's a great opportunity. So I'll leave it at that and turn the rest over to our engineer here.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Carl Holtgren, I'm with Grove Slate Associates in Richmond, Virginia. We're the traffic engineer for the project. And I was just going to show you a brief traffic simulation from the traffic study. This worked before the hearing here, so hopefully this works while I'm up here. And do you have screens up there as well, or just that one? Okay, great. So like I said, we, we did the traffic study for the project last year, and, which was reviewed and approved by, you know, city staff. And what we found was that, you know, the trip impact of the proposed project is going to be very similar to the 1125 apartments right across the street, and we're proposing to align directly with their driveway to make a four-leg intersection, and also build a southbound left-turn lane on Old Gravesmill Road for residents to turn into the site, you know, coming from the north. So what I'm going to show you here real quick, because I know time's limited, this is about a 30-second traffic simulation from the traffic model, I think you're seeing it on the screen. So before I put it in motion, you'll see the 1125 driveway, obviously on the west side, our future driveway on the east side, and then when I put it in motion, you'll see the cars driving on the network. This is a couple years into the future, full build out of our site, with some traffic growth and with Rosedale Farms traffic also on Old Gravesmill Road. And the white cars are going to go through the intersection, the gold ones are going to turn right, and the blue ones are going to turn left. So that's what the colors mean. And I'll just go ahead and put it in motion. So you can see coming out of our site, there's a gold car that's going to turn right to go north on Old Graves. There's a left turner coming out of the 1125 side, there they make their left-hand turn. And this is the PM peak hour, by the way, which is the, the heaviest traffic time. Here comes someone turning left into our side, you can see very little delay there. And in a couple seconds here, a graph, a graphic's going to pull up where you'll see red tick marks or red lines in each travel lane, and that's going to indicate the back of queue length from the traffic model. And you'll see that all the queues are very short, you know, one to two, one to two vehicles on each turning movement. And I'll pause it when it comes up. There, so you should be seeing, you know, red lines in each travel lane. So for example, coming out of our side, on the east side here, on the right-turn lane, the, the red tick mark is maybe one car back, so that indicates the longest queue is going to be one car. The left turn may be a little bit longer, maybe two cars. And again, this is the PM peak hour, you know, 5:00 PM at the busiest time of day. The left turn into the site looks like a two-car queue right here. Same for the northbound left into 1125 driveway, which is based on an actual traffic count that we did after the apartments were open. Again, maybe a two-car queue there. Again, maybe a two-car queue there. So that's a quick summary of the traffic study. I'd be glad to answer questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
One thing I wanted to add about the model. As Carl mentioned, this is taken from actual data. So we did put the boxes out. In discussion with the staff, we added, you know, developments that are approved, not yet being built. Everyone knows that the Rosedale project is now underway. And I'm assuming they want density for people to shop at their, all their shops inside. But this model and the reason we wanted Carl to show it is very helpful in mimicking the true movements of how it is. Carl himself has been that down that road. Myself, Mr. Brown travel that road, you know, multiple times a day. So this kind of illustrates, I don't think any of us expect to come up to a stop sign and not have to wait at least one or two cars. You know, if you're 15, then, you know, that's a different story. But, you know, one or two cars is normal. I don't think anyone expects to just blow through a stop sign and come right out onto Old Gravesmill Road. At least I would hope not. And maybe we can get the police involved if that happens. But, you know, everyone here who's coming home or leaving at this time of day, I think expects to wait for just a moment for the intersection or to safely pull out. So with that, I'd like to open it up for questions specifically regarding the things we talked about and the development or other issues. Or we have Carl here for specific traffic questions as well.
We'll call you back if we have any questions. Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? You want to come forward, please?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name's Katrina Fields. I live off of Coffee Road, but in Lynchburg City. I am a realtor here for the Lynchburg Association. I'm also a community sponsor for Patrick Henry Family Services. So I'm speaking kind of on the behalf of my clients on both sides. I do see a need for housing in Lynchburg City. I represent clients that have went outside of Lynchburg because they could not find the housing that they wanted in the city with the support of the city utilities that we have here, the services that we can provide. And so I've had to, you know, go elsewhere to support finding houses. And I would definitely like to be able to support the housing staying in Lynchburg City. As far as the community sponsorship that I do with Patrick Henry, we do have families that are in need. And we have families that want to have homeownership. And what Mr. Brown is providing is a way for that to actually happen. And you guys spoke on how great our city is. And it would be my pleasure to support families to continue to stay in this city. So I do ask that you do approve this project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Ted Hine. I'm a resident of the City of Lynchburg. And I am also on the long-term board directors of the Lynchburg Humane Society, which is a neighbor right across the street, which is also a partner with the City of Lynchburg. We appreciate your support. I will say that we had some, when 1125 was being put in, we had some concern about that. But they've turned out to be an amazing, amazing partner with us. We use their volunteers. They come over, they help with handling our animals. And we think this type of project will bring the same type of residents that want to help our organization. And so I'd like you to consider approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Mayor Dolan, members of City Council. My name is Tim Sylvester. I am a resident of Lynchburg and a retired surgeon. I moved to Lynchburg in 1979. I lived here and practiced medicine for just under 40 years. And during that time, I got to see this tremendous evolution and metamorphosis of Lynchburg. Many, many changes and most all of them being very good changes. I am now 75 years old and live in a house and have started thinking about downsizing. And in that process, I've begun the search for somewhere where I might want to live. I thought about townhouses, patio homes, et cetera. And I did some preliminary investigation, talked to some real estate people, and realized that the inventory of such homes is extremely limited here. I happened to be in a location where Mr. Brown was and heard him talking about his project, became interested in it. He explained it to me and I became even more interested. I'm here tonight to speak, to support this project.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Councilman. My name is Caleb Hill. I'm 18 years old and have lived in Lynchburg my whole life. I graduated from EC Glass last year and I'm now attending Central Virginia Community College. First thing I want to say is I love Lynchburg. I'm proud to call myself a true Lynchburgian. Having been in school with the same classmates since kindergarten, I've made lifelong friends. Some of these friends graduated alongside me and decided to stay and live in Lynchburg. With Lynchburg having so many colleges within the city limits, this causes for a high need of cheap housing. Talking with friends that go to school in Lynchburg, the last thing that they want to do is live on campus. The homeownership program would also be a very beneficial approach for college students like myself. Having a portion of each month's rent going into an investment account gives young adults a head start when they reach the real world. A vote against this is a vote against the youth, the future of Lynchburg, Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Debbie Seabree and I'm living a townhouse in Winhurst, which is Ward Four. And it's a three-story townhouse. So like the gentleman before me, I'm looking to retire too. And that's sort of why I bought the townhouse. I had a house and I couldn't, couldn't mow the lawn anymore. I couldn't maintain it. So I bought the townhouse in Winhurst and now I'm realizing it's three stories. And Mr. Brown is building one-stories townhouses. And that to me is, you know, when you get older, you don't want to be going up three flights of stairs like I am right now in Winhurst. Well, it's good exercise. At some point, I'm not going to be able to do that. So I was looking to, talking to Mr. Brown as well. And he is building one-level townhouses, which really aren't all available anywhere or there aren't a lot of them available in the county. So I love Lynchburg and all the amenities that it has. So I'm here to support him in this project. And that's all I say.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Madam Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Steve Clevenger. I'm a resident of the City of Lynchburg, two years now. I'm the minister for the Seven Hills Church of Christ at 810 Old Gravesmill Road. So I travel that road about five days, five or six days a week, depending. I want to thank you for this opportunity to address the council. I want to speak on behalf of the proposal, proposed development, and also on behalf of Paul and Jason Brown, the Brown family. Before I ever met these individuals, I met individuals who knew them many, many years ago. And I saw the benefits that they give to them before we even knew each other. So we had things in common before I ever met them. But they have had a legacy of helping people for decades that spans generations. And that legacy is being continued through his son, Jason, who has provided personal help and multiple connections to benefit both me and those I've gotten to help for services from my own home. I want to thank you also for your service toward the betterment of our beautiful community. As you follow in the footsteps and contribute along with those who have come before you, who have provided the infrastructure for a beautiful, inviting, and beneficial place to call home. I believe your unanimous vote for the rezoning request of the proposed properties and approval of their planned development will continue that legacy of providing for the welfare of the people of our beloved city. As a former radiologic technologist and RN case manager in the public healthcare system, and now as a church minister, I've witnessed firsthand the vulnerabilities and needs of those in our communities. You and I have been uniquely tasked in our roles of service to care for the needs and help the vulnerabilities of those in our communities. We both have sought for and been elected to these positions. Similarly, our present actions and decisions will have an impact that will outlive our current positions. Having attended the community presentation for the proposed development at these properties, I'm persuaded that your decision now to approve it will provide greatly for those in the future. My family and I have experienced our own struggles two years ago when we were looking for a house within the city that was affordable and up to date. Not only will it provide for the vulnerable, much-needed, clean, safe, up-to-date housing, jobs, and a unique ability to qualify for homeownership, which I think contributes greatly to their dedication to the community, but it will also provide physical beautification and improvements along with revenue that will in turn benefit the city itself and its infrastructure. So to close, I believe you desire to continue your successful work. And I ask that you stand with your fellow council members to continue to provide for our community through the approval of the rezoning and development at the properties in question. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Lakeisha Anderson and I'm in favor of the project because it gives people like me an opportunity for homeownership. Without this opportunity, homeownership for me is just not possible at the moment. When I say people like me, I'm speaking of single parents. I'm a single mom of two. I have one who I'm trying to put through college. She's almost finished. She's in an engineering program and I'm very proud. My son is in high school. I live in an apartment complex off of Coffee Road in Lynchburg. And it's far. It just seems like it's not accessible to anything. If you don't have a car, you are just out of luck. I am a payroll specialist at Bankers Field. And I make about $45,000 a year, which is nowadays, one income is just, it's hard. So when I learned about the project, I became very excited. My son was very excited as well because he wants to be in Lynchburg and attend Lynchburg City Schools. There are so many people struggling and no one really seems to care as long as they are making a profit off of property. Like, for example, homes are now Airbnbs and it's just not a lot of rental properties that are available and affordable for someone like me. So the developers of the project actually care about people. And I think that's very important. It's not about money. And the people that are just, just trying to make it and own a piece of America in this great city of Lynchburg. I am not originally from Virginia. I'm from Connecticut, but I've been here over 20 years and I'm not leaving, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Madam Clerk, are there any emails or phone calls from citizens?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have several correspondents submitted previously to be read into the record. The first one is from Brian Zabrowski. It reads, "I have seen this type of thing over and over again. City council is all excited about added tax revenue from all these new apartments and tenants, but gives very little consideration for the strain it will put on the traffic in the area. Please cast a vote in opposition for this proposal for 169 apartments, 29 condos, and Old Gravesmill Road at your meeting. Neighborhoods in 24502 are getting trampled on with every new development. At some point, we have to pull back. That time is now." The next, I have a correspondence from Brian Summers. It reads, "I am a fireman in the City of Lynchburg stationed at the opposite end of Old Gravesmill Road, Station Eight. I also reside in the congested 24502. Old Gravesmill Road is overcrowded enough with traffic from the numerous neighborhoods already home to this road and numerous industrial sites that generate larger-sized vehicles. Old Gravesmill Road cannot provide adequate ease of travel in its current state, specifically through the 600 to 1100 block. There are areas with drop-offs to the drainage ditch mere feet from the edge of the road. If there is to be an emergency on either end of Gravesmill Road or vicinity at certain times of the day or commute will be greatly reduced, especially with 200 or more vehicles. This side of town has roughly 15 apartment-type structures. Our department is not equipped to handle the influx of this type of neighborhood. Our EMS system is already overtaxed with six medic units for the whole city, major thoroughfares, numerous school systems, countless nursing homes, care facilities, and an array of industry, et cetera. I'm all about increasing revenue for the city as my job depends on it, but let's work on keeping big industry here with jobs, KDC, RR Donnelly, Master Brand Cabinets. Thank you for your time to consider my input." The next is a letter from Rachel Mullins. It writes, or reads, "Please vote in opposition to this proposal for more apartments and condos on Old Gravesmill Road at your meeting. Neighborhoods in 24502 are getting trampled on with every new development. With all the new housing and businesses that aren't even finished yet on Timberlake, the traffic is already an absolute nightmare and I have to travel it every day." This next one is a forum email. I'll read the email and then list the people who have sent this to me. It says, "Please cast a vote in opposition to this proposal for 169 apartments and 29 condos on Old Gravesmill Road at your December 13th meeting. Neighborhoods in 24502 are getting trampled on with every new development. At some point, we have to pull back. That time is now." Signed by Dan Johnson, Glenda Frye, Jennifer Tanner, Kathy Germoth, Lynn Wayne Seep, Sona Seep, Keith Ballenge, Melinda Tennis, Michelle and Tim Osborne, Ben Call, Ashley Jones, Claudia Starkevic, and Greg and Darlene Marsh. The last thing I have for you is a letter submitted and signed by several citizens, some who are attending here today. It says, "Dear members of Lynchburg City Council, we, the undersigned, are writing this letter in recommendation for the unanimous approval of the rezoning request for the properties located at 1126, 1114, and 1168 Old Gravesmill Road. We are all included as one or many local business owners, employers, employees, physicians, lawyers, taxpayers, and most importantly, residents of Lynchburg. Having long-term vested interests in our local community, we can only conclude that this development is in the best interest of our local community for the following reasons. Number one, as development costs continue to rise and housing becomes scarcer, Lynchburg must continue to grow in areas that have the space and land available to maximize our population's growth potential. Number two, this property is adequately located next to services needed for positive growth in blended communities, having a new large-scale commercial development within a quarter-mile that will provide daily necessities such as grocery, fuel, entertainment, shopping, and transportation. Additionally, they already developed commercial areas of Timberlake and Cornerstone and are within a short distance of this location. Number three, this property is located adjacent to an industrial park across the road from a different multifamily property in the Humane Society. And at the end of a corridor, road attaching to the primary highway is allowing for easy access to and from the entire city. The area surrounding this property is already over 68% rental property. These facts and other indicate that the property would be well-suited to be a multiple-family location. Number four, ZZ and ZZ has offered a unique homeownership program that would allow people interested in a program that assists them in acquiring a home and building equity that we do not believe any other person or organization is doing in the city. This opportunity is 100% private investment in our community and our people and will help offset a portion of the struggle- help offset a portion of the struggle for affordable housing that exists and has been largely discussed but remains unsolved. At a minimum, ZZ and ZZ is making an attainable effort to address an issue that has been discussed, lamented, and remained largely unsolved by the council and others for many years. Number five, review of the initial designs of the project indicate that the developer is making a tremendous effort to create a location that blends well in the local area, has amenities that are attractive for residents and non-residents alike, and is making public utility, road, lighting, and sidewalk improvements that can only benefit the city. Number six, this development would bring additional property tax revenue of approximately $250,000 for the apartment complex and another $90,000 from the townhomes in addition to the unknown amount of retail, commercial, and other tax revenue generated by keeping residents inside the city instead of them finding residents just outside the city lines in one of the new communities popping up at every thoroughfare. The Joint Center for Housing Studies at Harvard University has shown that multifamily properties actually pay more in tax with residents that use less services than the same from residents of single-family homes. We have attached the data through your perusal. As we understand, the developer has made every effort to inform the areas surrounding the property through public meetings at a church located next to the property and through mailings to generate interest, recommendations, and understand the residents' that neighborhood's concerns and ideas. Through all of those efforts, we understand that not a single neighborhood resident has expressed concern or dislike of the development. This list is far from including all of the reasons that this type of development should be unanimously supported at this location in the present-day economy where prices of everything is rising coupled against increased expectations for top-level services and lack of land area to grow. Our community will have to grow its density. We are concerned that our local leaders are not willing to accept that the population is expected to continue to grow at a rapid pace for the next 20 years or more, and that this growth will outstrip the available housing options in our community. Data will show that the average size of residents per home has shrunk from 4.6 per household to 2.6 in 2004 and has continued to decline. This means that we need more housing to house the same amount of people with less available housing. If we do not allow this type of development, there is no other solution. We strongly urge the council to unanimously approve this proposal." It is signed by Ms. Katrina Fields, Mary Brown, Paul Brown, Edward Hunt, Timothy Sylvester, who is also here, Michael Voth, David Apsha, Thomas Green, Carrie Tromby, John Buckles, Daniel Rhodes, Stephen Powell, Hugh Parnell, Matt Myers, and Steve Clevenger, who is also here. And that is all I have.
Thank you. So, you have an opportunity to rebuttal any of the negative objections. I'll give you 30 seconds and only have a couple minutes, I guess.
So, a couple of the things that we hear in some of the letters, I think, and maybe some of the residents that were here prior. One is the traffic piece, and certainly that's why we know that is always a touchy topic, and that's why we brought Carl in and wanted to show that display for you, because it's real-time, real effort, real thing. I mean, I don't know how many times y'all have seen that, but it shows what the impact of that is. And it's, when we heard the other group, they said it's a minimal impact, and people can say it is or it isn't, but that showed you, and it truly is. And that's just a short, brief period of time, but it's in the most traveled time of the day using actual data. So, in addition to that, the road is going to be changed, right? We heard a fireman that said that road's bad from the 600 block to the 1,000 block, which is right at the cusp of where this is going to be done. The reason that it's better at the 1,000 block is because right across the street from us, an apartment complex was put in, and they made improvements. We're going to continue the improvement, so that's going to create a more safe environment at that end of this road where you're going to have more traffic just because of the development that's occurring here and also there on Graysmill Road at Belo Rose. So, this is a way to get there. I think that some of the other things that I heard on there is, you know, it's 24502, I think they said is being trampled on, and that's where the development is happening. And I think that's true. I mentioned that in the last group. When the city has been built out, that's where the space is available and the space remains. If you go into other parts of the city, it's already built. There's already multifamily housing right beside residential places. I would ask you, if it's not this, what would it be? Right? I would say, you know, it's beside an industrial park, behind an industrial park. You don't want property in an industrial park. We just heard that. I understand that. That makes kind of sense. In the industrial park, we just heard that in this prior group's meeting. This isn't in an industrial park. It butts up an industrial park, for sure. It's across the street from the Humane Site, across the street from another apartment complex. You heard all the concerns of what if people have to live there in their single-family homes? Are they going to be upset by the noise? Are they going to be, you know, all of these things? This is not in that location. Next door, below grade, where the houses are that are smaller, single-family homes that are mostly rentals, it's below grade, and we've put the condos or townhomes down there where that's really what they're going to be abutting, not the apartments there in the front by the road. So, I think we've addressed a lot of those concerns, and with a legitimate view of the property, I think that that has to be recognized. I think you also heard some of the other people that spoke in favor in relationship to the homeownership potential. I think that's an amazing opportunity. Again, I'm excited about it. We're going to do it. We tried to proffer it, and we're told that that wasn't really something that could be done, but we're going to do it anyway. So, I'll turn the rest over to Amy.
Just a couple of things to point out, too. And clearly, I support this to move forward. I'm a city resident. But during the site plan process, if this does move forward, we would clearly, we have shown buffers. There would likely be, you know, a combination of buffers and fencing and all those things. And I don't know if you can tell on this plan, but we did plan for a bus stop out front. Clearly, there's other issues, larger with service, but we would like to provide that for people. One of the representatives who spoke in support, you know, was talking about services, so we would hope that services would be able to be brought to the proximity of the property where there would be a facility out front along the sidewalk. Clearly, sidewalk would be required along the front, as with city code, and a requirement would be as well, the improved left-hand turn lane, as well as the improved right-hand turn lane. So, I just wanted to clarify that both of those would be added and required as part of the project. You know, we've tried to separate so that the stormwater is more inclusive. There are several developments throughout some of the adjoining counties where we've been able to break up stormwater, so it's not just a giant pond that nobody likes. We would like to do some rain gardens and some more low-impact things to keep things contained in the site as well as lend itself to enhance the environment. As I mentioned before, walking trails that would be available to anyone who wanted to come and walk within the property. It's not just limited to people who live there, so there would be connectivity from the roadway sidewalk where folks would literally walk on the sidewalks and walk through the back in the trails. So, it's a challenging engineering project from a technical standpoint, but we're up for the challenge. You know, as a city business and a city resident, we're in support of that. So, any technical questions, I'd have to answer as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Faraldi?
I'll wait until you close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah. I thought you wanted to say something. Okay, the public hearing is closed in the matter, and I'll rest with council. Councilmember Faraldi?
Move to deny.
Any further comments, Councilmember Faraldi?
A few, thank you. I have a couple of observations. First and foremost, I think in reference to the previous project we just went over, I did neglect to mention, and so I'll include in this one, there is a strong need for housing in Lynchburg. And I think entertaining these discussions without recognizing that would be far from prudent. And yet, placement is key in my mind with this. And in recognizing the location of this, I'd appreciate the feedback, but unless it is entirely contrary, the traffic study is with current numbers as of done within the last month, week, however it may be. That Belo Rose development has not been finished out yet. That's another massive development right down the street. There are other traffic concerns I have with this that I could talk about, but my most important concern is related to the, what is left of this neighborhood. I mean, 68% of this area, surrounding area, is rental property. So, that's a reason we keep putting more there. Furthermore, I find it odd that we're talking about, which I do love this idea, this concept is, I think, certainly one of the key solutions to move forward with. But to say it's unsolved by council, the housing issue, and then also this is the only solution to move forward with, A, says that it's government's responsibility to fix all of our problems, and B, this is the only one you should be considering, is kind of, one, discredits my viewpoint of what government should be doing, and then, secondly, it also says, "This is it, and if you don't like it, you're going to have to deal with a crowd that has a lot of money and influence on this city." And I represent a strong constituency in this zip code that has overwhelmingly expressed opposition to this development, among others, in this neighborhood. You know, all that being said, this idea is great. And yet, I'm hearing respectfully, retired folks are interested in moving into this location, but then also we're trying to make it an incentivized program for folks to get homeownership. So, which one is it? Are we creating a program to incentivize homeownership for those who need it, working two or three jobs as a single family, or is it for a retiring community? And if it's both, that's entirely crossing wires in my mind. What are we doing? I see heads shaking. I don't understand it at this point, and that's neither here nor there. I have, I'll just do this. Forty-nine emails from folks who have expressed opposition to this project. I'm going to align with those who have sent me here to represent their interests, who currently live in this neighborhood, who want to maintain what little fabric is left of it, and for that reason, I'll be voting against it, among others.
Councilmember Holgerson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, as I hear this and I hear the neighbors and the folks that are in support of it, I actually applaud it. I mean, I think, when I look at this, I think it's a great product. I think it's a great developer. I mean, everybody has spoken so highly of the developer, the great concept of the homeownership. The problem is, what we're looking at today is land use, and I think it's the wrong location. Because what we've seen here now, and it's fairly evident, because in order for this actually to be approved, we got to, one, first change the future land use map from medium-density residential to high-density residential. We also then would have to change the zoning that everybody understands and agrees, here's what you can do in this actual 17 or 12, 13 acres. You can go from an R2, which is single-family, fairly low, medium-density residential, to the maximum density of residential. So, again, I think it's a great concept. It's a great project. It's a great developer. It's a wrong location. There's been enough in this area that has been developed. There's lots of areas that I've heard and seen other proposals that are coming in other parts of the city. This area is just, it's unbelievable how much the density, and every project is yet another one, which compounds on the traffic. And again, great project, great product, just the wrong location.
Vice Mayor Wright, did you?
Yes, thank you. So, I am in support of this project, so I'll be opposing the motion that's on the table, and I'm going to support it for a few reasons. First, as I think the petitioner has shown, it fits within the neighborhood. It's directly across the street from another development of a similar size. You know, it is a tract of land, and the question was asked rhetorically, what else would go here? And I think that, you know, some folks may answer and say, "Well, we would like to see a lower residential use," but I think that actually, the point was also made about cities like ours that are growing need to, in some ways, prioritize density, which this project does to an extent. I'll say that I initially had some concerns with the project about the RC nature of part of the property, you know, impact to watershed and traffic. Those concerns have been tempered, especially the traffic, well, I'll say the watershed one by the steps you will have to take according to the, you know, the environmental regulations, but then for traffic by the presentation, and thank you very much for the study and for the fun demonstration. I think that was the first time I've ever seen somebody do that in front of council, so that was fun. So, and I should say, this is different from my concern with the prior project, which had to do with the industrial use of that corridor and the likelihood of that industrial use increasing. So, that is the difference here for me between these two projects. The point was made by several folks about the housing being an issue in Lynchburg, and it is. We're short several thousand units in Lynchburg, which means it's, I mean, what does that mean? It's really hard for people to find, we have the housing authority here. It's really hard for folks to find homes that are affordable, especially in the lower-income and mid-market range, which I think is the sort of the sweet spot that this development is trying to hit. I understand the concern about affecting neighborhoods. That is a huge concern, and I don't want to diminish it in any way, but we do need to increase density in the city to take into account all the folks who currently live here, and then, of course, the folks who are projected to move here. I think it's really telling, actually, that we have a church in the neighborhood, the Humane Society, which is right across the street. I mean, if anybody would be opposed to this project, you would think it should be those folks, because they're going to want, who in theory would have to hear the, all the complaints about access, right? And they are here in support, which I think is actually really telling. So, I also appreciate, I'll just say, the amenities that they'll be accessible to the public should this project proceed, that'll be made freely available. So, I think for a host of reasons, and notwithstanding the concerns that some folks have, this is a good project, and I look forward to supporting it.
Thank you. Dr. Tweedy?
Thank you. I will be opposing this motion, and I will save my comments for hopefully the next motion.
Well, Dr. Wilder?
I oppose the motion. I'm in favor of the project. I'm really excited about the mixed community, even though it might be strange to some persons to have seniors and young persons and other persons together. That's what a community is to me. So, I appreciate that part. I appreciate the part about the homeownership. One thing we talk about in Lynchburg, all the apartments, but not really much homeownership or townhouses. So, I appreciate the, I haven't heard of any, too many projects where they're doing homeownership of this nature. So, I am excited about that portion as well. We need more projects like that. I've heard the concerns from the neighbors about the traffic. I understand that. You know, and I appreciate the traffic studies. I did address some of those issues, some of those concerns there as well. Thank you. That's all. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I, too, will be opposing this motion, and for all the reasons that certainly Vice Mayor Wright talked about, and believe it or not, I read most of the Harvard Housing Study report, which, and, you know, and it was, very clearly the conclusions were that we, as a society, are really becoming anti-apartment and anti-multifamily housing. And I think that this project fits within the neighborhood. I love, love, love the homeownership portion, which is something we sit up here all the time and talk about, how our folks need to start owning their own places. So, and I was also very concerned for a while about the Dreaming Creek and the piece down there, but after reading all the documentation on that, I'm satisfied that that is not going to be an issue. So, that's where I sit. Does anyone call for the vote?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I find it interesting that we have so much public opposition overwhelmingly considered to those speaking in favor, that this lame-duck council is still going to move forward with a development that the neighbors are clearly in opposition to. I don't understand it, and I think it's indicative of what's going to be happening in January when we get a new majority. It's downright offensive to the neighbors who live in this area that they are constantly seeing more and more rejection for what their thoughts are when it comes to what's in their backyard. And so, with that in mind, if amending my motion to extend this one more time to January would do me any good, I'd be happy to do that.
Because you think the vote will change, is that?
I do.
I don't think that's fair to the developer who has come here tonight expecting a decision with this council.
I don't think it's, well, candidly, Madam Mayor, I don't think it's fair to the 50-something people who have emailed me.
Well, I would like to see the addresses of where those people live.
Sure. You can email them back and ask them yourself.
I don't think their neighbors have the greatest of, I don't think they're...
I don't think their neighbors are the greatest, I don't think they're neighbors in the Graves.
You could have emailed them yourself and asked.
I'm just reserving my comments if I can, Madam Mayor, but I will go ahead. I left the last meeting supporting this project, and it was because, for many reasons that we have heard tonight, I thank you, everyone who came out in support of this project, because it offers opportunity, it is workforce housing. Everyone in our city and region know that we need more housing stock to help the housing crisis in our city. We want great employees, we want families in our city, we want employers who will hire people, but we don't want to house people. We don't want to give people the opportunity. So a lot of my conversation at the last meeting was to generate solutions and ideas from a couple of colleagues, as to what would you consider workforce housing options? What would you consider in our city where we are 50 miles landlocked? But what we get are organized email campaigns of, of course, citizens who have a concern on what is happening in the neighborhood. I live in 24502, I've seen the growth just like everyone else. But what are we to do when we do need options for our families, for our single parents? I love seeing an 18-year-old who says he loves staying in Lynchburg here. That's what we want. We want our talent, our future talent, to stay here, and they need places to live. And so I challenge, because what I heard at the last meeting from a Neighborhood Association president and from other neighbors of mine in 24502, who are not in the same ideological perspective as some of our council members who create lobbying campaign email cut-and-paste click options for people to send to us to oppose. They said, and I can take and summarize, you can go back and look at the video, they said, "We are not opposed to change and growth. We would just like the consideration of infrastructure investments along with that." Where will the people attend schools? We may need some more schools built. We may need some options of a few turn lanes added to Timberlake. But you know what? It will be on that January 1st council to make the decision about infrastructure. But on this council that supports a community, that supports housing, I am voting yes for housing. I would like to be the one to make the motion when we come out of this shenanigans and go for having those units in with a developer who cares about people. And it's obvious who cares about people on this council and in the development world. You can't say you want homeownership and then oppose housing, and oppose different options to get there. God bless this city, God bless anyone who wants to continue to support the issues and causes that affect people.
Thank you. Pardon? And we're going to, I'll call for the vote. The motion on the floor is to deny.
Wait a minute, it's to deny?
The motion is to deny, to deny, the developer. Motion fails four to. Thank you.
I would like to make a motion.
Second.
Just for clarification.
There shouldn't be two.
The motion, yes, I was about, I was reading it, I heard the second, I'm sorry. I'd like to make the motion to approve this project.
And?
Second.
Any further comments?
For all of the reasons that we mentioned, I look forward to this development going forward, I look forward to the opportunity that will provide for families. And I ask that the community continue to speak up for itself.
Vice Mayor?
Well, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Tweedy, for your words. I just want to express gratitude to the developer for bringing this project forward, for those who have given up of their evenings. You are now two hours into a meeting, so congratulations on making it, and thank you very much for being here. And I also, you know, I want to, I want to thank my colleagues for, for this discussion. These are real issues, and I, it's hard. Affordable, housing in general is hard. And yet, I see Ms. Mayor shaking her head. It is hard stuff. Obviously, you can see that we're wrestling, we're grappling with these big questions up here. So I just appreciate the conversation, I appreciate the thought and care that everybody's bringing to this discussion, because it really is a challenging subject.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Hallgason?
Just, I guess, from a technical standpoint, there are actually two different resolutions that before us, so that's what should be stated. Is this the amending the future land use map, or is it amending the zoning? So those are two separate resolutions that are before us, and they're normally done on two separate motions, so.
Well, we have this done on one motion this time. Correct?
As I understood, the last one, the vote, the motion was treated to deny both, and this one, if there needs to be clarification, is the motion to approve both?
Yes, the motion is to approve both.
That's appropriate, we've done that before.
Historically, we've always done those.
Well, tonight, we're, well, tonight, we're making new history.
Just to clarify.
I'd like to call for the vote. So this is to approve the developer. Motion passes four to. Thank you very much. Thank you. Looking forward to the project. Next item, consideration of introducing a resolution amending the FY 2023 Sewer Capital Projects Fund budget and appropriating $25 million American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, grant to reimburse costs associated with combined sewer overhaul projects. Tim Mitchell will give us a brief summary.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, thank you. Upon conclusion of the public hearing, we recommend adopting the resolution amending the FY 2023 FY, excuse me, Sewer Capital Budget to include the $25 million appropriation from the 2002 General Assembly session and the Department of Environmental Quality. These funds will be used specifically for CSO projects, and they require no local match. So I'll be glad to answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Madam Clerk, are there any emails or phone calls from citizens?
There are none.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with council. Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, I would move the resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments?
I want to thank the Water Resources staff for bringing this forward. I also want to express thanks to the General Assembly and our local delegation for, for helping facilitate the 25 million. It's a really big deal for Lynchburg.
Thank you.
I'm just thankful for various funds coming to attract, to address our infrastructure issues. So I'm appreciative of that, for the city locating those funds as well, bringing it to Lynchburg.
Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Hallgason?
Just, Mr. Mitchell, you know, every year, you do the rate study, you know, based on use and everything, and, and hopefully, I know that lots of times, some of the rates are a function of the system and everything. Hopefully, this will help augment some of the, these large increases in rates every year.
So basically, what this will do is help accelerate the completion of the CSO program. Once we're complete, then we're out from under the consent order and the requirement to tie the sewer rates to the median household income. So while it won't reduce sewer rates now, it'll help mitigate sewer rates in the future and get us complete sooner.
Anyone else? Public hearing is closed, the matter rests with council.
Oh, I think you, you want to call for the vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's been a long, I did that already, yeah. Okay, call for the vote. Been a long night. Motion, what did you say? Motion passes six to. Now, we're in the public comment section of our meeting. During public comment, individual speakers have three minutes to speak, and those representing the group have five minutes to speak. Typically, city council takes comments majoring in the public comment section of the agenda under advisement, and may refer concerns to the city manager for follow-up. Tonight, we're going to hear from a citizen regarding a matter, Zandria Herbert. Maybe not.
Come on with that.
Okay, I guess, not here tonight. Okay, I guess we won't be hearing, probably got bored with all that discussion.
It's good discussion.
General business, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the designation of the Darington Hills Apartments as a revitalization area. Council was previously briefed on this item during today's business item briefings. Guess we, oh, oh, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion authorizing the designation of the Darington Hills Apartment as a revitalization area.
Second.
Thank you. Comments?
I'm excited to support the project. I have sat on the Housing Authority Board to hear the whole development process, and to get to this point is very exciting, and we look forward to cutting the ribbon for new families, new housing in the Darington neighborhood, along with working with city partners and others. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'm excited about the project. I know we had several discussions with the neighbors, with community members, with stakeholders. I know the first portion of the project is, I think, 80 units with additional units to follow, some of them are mixed community, for youth as well as adults. Just, it's such a need for housing, oh my goodness, especially income-based housing is such a strong need. So I appreciate the project development, I appreciate the efforts of the Housing Authority to really reach out to the community and the residents and say, what do you want in this section, what do you want in this apartment, how do you want the property to look at, giving them several models to select. So it was really buy-in by the community residents that's going to live there. And also, we talked about transition housing, it's just not consistently, it also happened to move to that next step, like the homeownership, like the project we just had. So I appreciate the work that you are doing, I appreciate the work that you do. And I'm from Lynchburg, and I've seen the Darington area. So I definitely want to see that upgraded and changed, so I appreciate that. And earlier, we talked about the concern that the community had about the, the pool or the landfill that was there that caused certain gases to be eroded or whatever. We did discuss that, and the study was done, and the gases are not, it's a low level, it's not a harmful level at all, it's a low level, and it's been stagnant, so it's not changing or increasing. And the development is not on that parcel of the property. So we want to make that clear as well in this session, so everybody understands, we're not building on that section, they had the old landfill, there's, there's had some gases. It's on the other portion where the current apartments, I believe, are. And what they're like as well is it's a staggered approach, where they're not evicting people, they have a staggered approach, not like another project we're not going to talk about, but they have a staggered approach where they're moving residents out in pieces, moving to different housing, and make sure that that displaced, but they have a location to go to, and not just putting people out on the streets. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, cast your vote.
I forgot.
Pardon?
You wanted to hit the button? No.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. I can't. Next item, consideration of adopting a resolution amending the FY 2023 City's Federal State Aid Fund budget and appropriating $76,000 from the 2022 State Homeland Security Program grant to fund equipment for the fire department's technical rescue team. And Fire Chief Greg Wormser will give us a brief summary.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. This is pass-through money, there is no match required for this grant. This grant would fund some needed equipment purchases for our technical rescue team, which is both used in our community as well as statewide. Again, there is no match, there are a number of things that we purchased was part of this grant, including some technical rescue equipment for heavy lifting, personal protective equipment for our providers as well. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. This matter went to Finance Committee this morning, so I will defer to our chair, Councilmember Hallgason.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We discussed this this morning, and you'll notice that the language is extremely vague, but I guess that just does give lots of latitude with this grant to be able to use some discretion on purchase, purchasing what is needed. And the Finance Committee recommended approval, I'll put that forward as a motion.
No second is necessary, is there any further discussion?
I just, I appreciate, I appreciate finding other resources for our community to make our community stronger. We went to a dedication of a fire truck at, was it Station 7? What number was that? And it was so, it's already do the wet down of the fire truck, and then they push it, push in the new fire truck, and what they done with the old fire truck. But again, I think that's so fascinating, it was like 1.6, 1.4 million dollars. It's amazing how much a fire truck costs now. But again, we appreciate the work you're doing, and appreciate we're going to have new equipment for our citizens. Thank you.
Okay. May I call for the vote, please? Motion passes six to. Thank you. Next item, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the City of Lynchburg's 2023 legislative agenda. We had worked on this previous TAE's work session, and I see our city manager is standing before me, anxious.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, thank you very much. Yes, we did address the city's legislative package at our earlier work session. I will also point out that, first, gave you a draft of what proposed legislative package on October 25th. We then, on November 1st, had an opportunity to engage each other on what's of import, and we talked about highlighting principles that are specific to our city to ensure that our local delegation that deals with hundreds of bills, maybe even more than that, at the each session, each General Assembly session, it's a finite number of weeks, that the more that we can agree to what's particular and specific for our city, the better. And so we highlighted at least three, we kind of sourced or socialized with our local delegation at a legislative dinner on November 15th, and here we are on December 13th, having gotten some feedback from each of you, even earlier today, what we put forward as maybe import to our city is specific, where again, the emergency custody orders and temporary detention orders, the ECOs and TDOs, and the impact that it has to our police force and what it requires, and it's a state requirement. Councilman Hallgason pointed out that we should obviously look at working for something here that maybe not necessarily the state can get us the solution that we need, the fastest approach, and so we're going to continue to do that. Also of import to one, at least one council person in particular, as it relates to the Commonwealth's Attorney, but all of you, as it relates to each of the state local employees that receive resources from the state government, that they should probably receive more, because each year, and one of our favorite things are unfunded mandates. There are things given to our district courts, to our, to our clerk of court, to our commission, to our Commonwealth's Attorney, to our Commissioner of the Revenue, to our treasurer, that sometimes they don't have the resources and they have to appeal to the locality, and we're always very concerned with finite resources, how do we make them stretch when you have 17 departments and other state local employees? How do you make that work? And so there's an appeal in here to ask the state to look at those compensation numbers and how best to support those offices that work together with us here in the City of Lynchburg. Last of which is a component called SWAT-ing. The city supports legislation that provides law enforcement and additional tools to combat the act of making hoax communication to 911 or to a private citizen who then communicates the false information to 911 regarding an immediate threat to human life with the intent of triggering an immediate and significant law enforcement response, usually involving a SWAT team. This happened here at one of our high schools, it's happened across the Commonwealth, it's something that's of a particular issue, and it's truth in what they describe as what kind of strain that can have on our local law enforcement officers. And so in that sense, we're partnering with a locality out of Northern Virginia to look at it. Councilman Faroli did at the earlier session bring up the County of Roanoke and some approaches to policing there. Councilman Faroli, what I'd ask is if I, together with the police chief, can kind of work with you on just exactly what that is? I kind of gave him a little bit of a note today that you had sent to me, just to kind of get some more feedback. He's going to look at the County of Roanoke and what they're doing, and see whether or not, how that would work for our city. And so those are the comments, some of the feedback input that I have received in this process that started October 25th. I put forward, back to you, and I ask that you, you adopt the package so that we can have it prepared for this impending assembly. With that, Madam Mayor, turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hallgason?
Second.
Any comments?
No. No, no, you, you. Okay, second, second.
Okay, okay, Councilmember Hallgason, does any comments? Do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
No, thanks to city staff.
Councilmember Faroli.
So will we adopt this without seeing the final language that we talked about, or did I miss what you were saying?
So the final language, unless the county component that you're putting forward, I don't, I'm not prepared to put that into the document this evening. So if that's the absolute language, because I don't, I didn't hear any other feedback or input about changes to the document, other than maybe looking at this other locality, what it's proposed, and maybe that we should look at something like that? So if...
So with that, since I made the motion, I mean, I think that that can easily go in there. I saw the email where, I'm not sure if it was Roanoke County, or actually, maybe Roanoke City. I think it was Roanoke City. Okay. And they, and they did... And they did a complete 180 on what they proposed a while ago.
Okay.
They said, "We need to make sure, we're having crime going through the roof, so therefore we need to roll back all the big national things of defunding police, and don't let police tail, you know, arrest folks with broken taillights and all those kind of things," what they said.
Okay.
And so they're, it's kind of giving back our law enforcement, the ability to be law enforcement again.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm assuming those were kind of... So I'm asking you to adopt the package as it is, we could, subsequent to this, do an addendum or amendment if that be the case, but I think it requires a certain kind of, if Councilman Faroli's okay with that, get together with you and anyone that might be interested in having that conversation. That's certainly something on tenth docket that we could put in as an addition to the current package.
And I'm pretty sure our local delegation is actually on board with that already, so...
I'm comfortable with that, I'd rather not put on something without seeing it and working it in, so.
My only feedback, and Councilman Faroli, you asked me a question about timing. Timing is that the assembly itself, first day is January 11th, and our next council meeting is January 10th. I certainly would like to have just kind of something to work with in advance of the session.
24 hours is not a lot of time.
So you can have this, and then we can add to it on the template.
For what it is worth, just for all of our awareness, the prefiled deadline has already passed, and so our delegation has up to a limit of five bills in the House, maybe eight in the Senate, to introduce after that time has passed, and I have a feeling they haven't used all of them, so if there really is a legislative component within this, there should be still be wiggle room with at least one of the four members to advance, so.
Okay. So can I call for the vote? I'm calling for the vote. Motion passes 5-1 negative. And we are adjourned.